Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. This open meeting, the select board is being conducted in person and via Zoom. Speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and the chair will allow for the public to provide comment at the beginning. The select board would like to hear public comments, and if there's further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting and any hearings will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I know otherwise. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields support to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after the members have spoken, chair may afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask any members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of public commentators, they'll call on each by name and afford a number of minutes. Three for this meeting for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. And then the first item on our agenda is actually the Pledge of Legions, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation under God, in the visible but never seen before.
Thank you. All right, we will now turn to public comments. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there's further action that is required by the board, chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Are there any public comments in the room this evening? All right, are there any public comments online this evening? All right, I see no public comments, and so we will move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. We have three items, two cemetery deeds and an application, as we've seen before, for the park lighting ceremony, both the tree and the menorah for the tenth holiday stroll. Any questions or comments on our three items for the consent agenda?
No, I will move to approve consent agenda items A through C as presented, contingent upon adherence to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidance, authorizing use of digital signatures.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, David? Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you as always to the organizers, both on the town staff side and the public side for the city of the stroll or the holiday stroll, sorry. Uh, moving on to item five, which is an application for a block party use of town property. Great, do we have any further information on this one?
I don't know besides the permit. I'm looking if there's anyone from Linden. They went on on the call. Oh, it's like, so the people is pretty straightforward. It's uh, yeah, it is. Uh, Sally Switzer, I'll just, I got that name wrong, but um, I don't know, it's still pretty straightforward. They're, they're asking for a little bit of support. Um, they're, they're asking, I think, software or some incumbents, and the applicant, the application does allow for them to do requests, but it got the stretching down there. Whatever the possibility be, so we but the department seem to be, you know, no issues. So I think straight.
Pretty straightforward to me as well. Any questions on this application? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the block party on Linden Street on Saturday, September seventh, twenty twenty-four. Rain date, September twenty, September the eighth, twenty twenty-four, from one P M. to five P M. as presented, contingent upon adherence to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidance and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Linden Street, have fun.
I'm pretty sure Linden Street has done this before, and I think so, and see, we can put it on the consent next time.
All right, we'll move on to item six, which are two appointments, and we'll start with the planning board. Um, Jeff, do you want to come on up? Uh, and so, um, first, I just want to note, uh, Jim Coleman recently resigned from the planning board. He's been active in town for decades, and so, um, I think we mentioned this before a few meetings ago, but, um, virtual thank you for Jim and all the service he's dedicated, not just to the planning board, but many other organizations throughout the town over many, many years. Jeff, do you want to give us a quick overview on your, uh, interest in the planning board?
Sure, yeah, so, um, I on a concentration commission about a year ago and an opportunity to be an alternate on the planning board came up, so I took that uh, opportunity to be an alternate for the last year and, um, Jim's, uh, reservations. Another, uh, full-time spots and big shoes to fill, but, uh, I, you know, enjoyed survey development this past year. Some engineering background, which is a whole area to get, uh, serving around the boards. Or, you know. Continue.
Very good. Any questions for Jeff Black, who has been serving as an alternate and is now, um, asking for an appointment as a full member of the planning board?
I do. Um, Jeff, thank you for stepping up, not only to volunteer last year for, uh, your appointment, but now a year later to be appointed to a full-time role. Um, in your year of planning board, um, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to observe some of the things that Maynard is working on, trying to sort of move forward in a consistent manner, et cetera. If I were to ask you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's just going to appear that way. If I were to ask you, um, what you think is most critical for Maynard's development as we move forward? What would your, what would be, what would you say?
Um, I mean, I think the stuff that's been happening downtown, in one of the departments we've been staying for the downtown overlay districts has been, um, exciting to, to see, and I think a lot, over the last year, I guess, I've been with, uh, probably more and more efforts than, uh, Bill and the N A P C have been progressing.
Yeah.
I think that would be pretty transformative for the town.
Yeah, I think those are two critical items, and of course, um, a lot of the development we have here in town, as I'm sure you're aware, is, uh, predicated upon our ability to be able to service people with water and sewer property. And that's critical for us as well, so, um, although the planning board specifically doesn't get involved in that, and indirectly you do in approval of projects, et cetera, relative to some of the issues that we have to deal with. Well, and you'll find, working with us, and I look forward to working with you as a colleague, um, that we're concerned about making sure that we don't over, overstretch, but yet we still have to address the issues of development that help to, uh, you know, balance out our, our tax base. So good luck. And, uh, go to it.
Any other questions from the board?
None for me.
Nope, not for me.
Very good. We have the application, and we have the request from the chair for you to step on as a full member too, after being alternate for a year. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Jeff Black to the planning board with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, authorizing use of digital signatures if
Seconded.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next, we have Maura Flynn, uh, applying to be part, um, applying to be appointed to the board of welcome.
Hello.
Uh, we have your application in front of you. Uh, do you want to give us a, a brief overview of your interest in the planning board? I'm sorry, your interest in the Board of Health?
All right, thank you for, uh, accepting my application. Um, I'm a nurse, first of all, and, um, I've actually worked with the medical reserve for here in Maynard. As a nurse, uh, I have worked in many public health arenas with public health nurses, and I've sat on regulatory boards, uh, one of them being Board of Nursing for ten years. Uh, and that board is, you know, the mission is to protect the health of the public, protect the public citizens. And so this is seems like a natural, kind of a natural way for me to get back into, um, you know, giving back to the community.
Good, and we have your application here, and we have a recommendation from the chair of the planning board as well.
No, chair.
Chair of the Board of Health as well, my apologies. One item behind tonight. Any questions for the applicant?
Well, uh, I, I have one very, what I hope will be a quick question. Um, what, what do you see as the, the one or two main challenges that, that the, the, this particular board will face over the next year or so?
Well, anytime you're dealing with the public, you're facing the challenge. Um, you know, with a lot of the, um, uh, pandemics and endemics out there, um, you know, there's bound to be more, um, illnesses coming around. I mean, you know, germs might, you know, they, uh, change and, and evolve, and we're going to see probably as the, um, you know, the regulators will tell us that there was probably going to be another pandemic at some point. So I think the idea is to keep the community safe and to monitor it on a regular basis. Um, you know, making sure that people are vaccinated appropriately and, um, just overall, you know, keeping, keeping a good brain on, on things in general.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
More of a comment. Uh, I've had the pleasure of knowing Maura for years, and, um, I am highly excited to see her to become a member of the Board of Health. Um, everything that Maura gets involved in is she puts her all into it and, and more. Um, including now sitting at our election tables at the, uh, at Election Day, as a poll worker, which is very much appreciated. But I look forward to your expertise being utilized by the board, and, um, you know, hopefully we never have a repeat of four years ago in the, in the coming days, you know, when a, when a board like this, like you're going to join, um, suddenly gets thrown in front of everything in town and becomes the most important group that they didn't, you know, in many ways didn't sign up for that. It was a remarkable job done by the Board of Health to work their way through, uh, despite immense pressure from the town, and let's hope that never happens again, but they're in good hands with you as being one of the members.
Thank you, Dave.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Maura Flynn to the Board of Health with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Maura, thank you, and I'm glad I didn't accidentally appoint you to the planning.
Thank you, Maura.
Look, thank you.
Planning board would be a healthy group.
All right, that takes care of the appointments for this evening. We're moving on to item seven, which is signage, uh, where we get to, um, well, we enjoying seeing the art here from some of our students. Uh, Greg, do you want to?
Well, I think, I don't want to steal any thunder, so I want to introduce Charles Carruck. Um, he is uh, everything to the major public schools. Um, special project, I can't remember what his official title is, but he's ever since, and he works hard to do all the fun stuff for the school system, so. Charles, want to explain what you're trying to do today?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for, um, having this on the agenda, and thank you to both Gregs for all your help in moving this forward. For several years, uh, we have the Wellness Committee, which is a committee of the district that is, um, was one of the committees that we must have by regulation. A wellness committee meets several times a year and, and works on a number of issues, uh, and also works closely with the Board of Health in some areas. For several years now, we have partnered with a group called Safe Roots to School. Uh, and, um, it's the, it's been a very good partnership. And they, uh, they come in and it's part of the, uh, Massachusetts Department of Transportation. They come in and they do bicycle safety training, pedestrian safety training. Uh, they met at Fallow one year and went over, uh, uh, in great cooperation with Justin DiMarco, went over a number of kinds of safety things, um, and, and Tiger Drive. We've really done well with them, and anyway, it's a statewide group, and every year they have a contest on signs for middle school students. And this year, two of our middle school students actually won first prize, Austin Wild and Sadie Poland. And, uh, Department of Transportation made for us, uh, twelve signs, um, and I, there is a, I'll try to show you, uh, just a little bit of the shows on screen, the signs that they made. Uh, you can start to see everything. It's good, uh, it's actually a two-sided sign. They're, they're just wonderful signs. Uh, I'll show you the other one. And we were thrilled. And, um, what the idea was that they, uh, uh, sort of like, like lawn signs, except they'll go near bus stops. We wanted to get permission to put the, um, put the, the signs up around town. Uh, we've worked very cooperatively with Justin, as I mentioned, and we'll make, make sure that the signs are in, in good places. We also were in touch with the, um, Chief Noble, and he has, uh, no problem with that. Um, we, um, we thought that with, with, uh, with Justin's cooperation, we'll put the signs in, uh, strategic places uh, around, around the town. Um, they're just simple signs, uh, wire things, just like a lawn sign, uh, to, to be up. Um, there, um, uh, the, uh, we'll, we'll install them, as I said, with the direction with, uh, with Justin. I want to give special thanks to, to, uh, Brenda Sullivan. Brenda Sullivan is a chair of our Wellness Committee. She's a health and phys ed teacher at Fowler's School, and she is the, she has a meeting, she's also a coach. She's meeting tonight, so she couldn't be there. She's the one who's organized, and then the real, um, the real person, uh, that's done the work for this project. I'm just a helper. Um, there, um, the, um, we acknowledge the town could remove them at any time. Uh, we, um, we will accept any public safety direction we get, whether it be from Justin or from the fire, the police, or whatever, and we'd, um, um, we would really like, uh, approval to be able to put these signs up. And I'd be glad to answer your questions, too.
Great. Um, very good. Any questions from the board?
I have a question, but go, go ahead.
Chris, you go first.
Um, so there's the two signs, I see them in the body of our, uh, packet. Now, are, are those the only two signs we'll post, be posted in Maynard? Are we going to have signs other children post?
No, well, the, um, the signs, the, the, the signs were, um, made for us by the Department of Transportation. They just did the signs of the two people who won statewide. It was, we didn't, we didn't make, the, the, the students designed the signs, the signs were made, um, to, you know.
No, I understand, but in, so Maynard, in Maynard, the signs that are going to be posted in Maynard, are those, those are from kids from across the state?
No, no, just the two from Maynard.
Just the two from Maynard, okay, all right. I was just wondering if they kind of
Sorry, I, I guess I didn't understand.
I was just kind of wondering if they, you know, the, the Maynard signs ended up in, in this town, and we had the kids' signs, if it was kind of a sharing.
Yeah, no, the winners were not, uh, the winners were for the whole state, the two, two students from Maynard, one for the entire state.
Oh, that's, that's awesome. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to believe this. Chris and I have served on this board way too long together, because your question is exactly mine, so.
I'm going to resign tomorrow. We have, yeah, that happens.
I, I have a quick question, if I may. Um, just wondering, were the, uh, the bus drivers, uh, included any part of this discussion? The reason why I ask is having, uh, supervised, um, bus duty in Framingham for eight years. Um, I'm, I'm very conscious of the need to include bus drivers in, in, in a lot of these types of conversations, just to engage the, more the point, the kids with them, yeah.
Right, that is an excellent, excellent question, and yes, we, uh, we only have four buses, as you know.
Right, yeah.
Um, but we, um, we make it a point to have, to have really good relationships with the bus drivers and to keep them informed. You're so correct that, yeah, we don't want them all of a sudden driving down the street and seeing the signs and know nothing about them, so, yes.
Right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want to do bus duty and, uh, you know, Maynard sometime, you can always use it. That's how I'm going to spend my, if I go to purgatory, it's going to be, uh, indoor, indoor recess and bus monitoring.
Well, I'll, I'll bear that in mind, yes.
Any other questions before the article? All right, well, I appreciate the, the time you've taken to, to, uh, work through all of the issues before coming to us with, um, the D P W director and the chief of police. Uh, I think the signs look great, and I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Before I read the motion, I just want to say, Charles, you're far more than just a helper.
Thank you.
I move to approve the posting of signs around town designed by the students at the Fowler's School for the Safe Root to School Program as presented, contingent upon adherence to all federal, state, and local public safety guidance.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, David? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move forward to item eight, which is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing. Notice is hereby given. In accordance with all Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at seven fifteen P M. at Town Hall Room two oh one, one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, oh one, seven, five, four. To consider the application for a transfer of a Section twelve restaurant, all alcoholic beverages licensed for Brave Family Corp., doing business as Maynard Pizza Bar, manager Eduardo Braga at one forty-nine Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts. Hybrid option attendance via Zoom using the access instructions on the posted agenda to be found at W W W dot town of Maynard dot, sorry, W W W dot town of Maynard dash M A dot go. Copy of application is on file in the office of the Select Board.
You know, you need to reread if you make an error.
What's that? Don't do. All right, so, yeah. The hearing is open, uh, and this, um, Greg, do you want to give us an overview? This is a transfer of a liquor license, correct?
Yeah, because I believe the restaurant is going to do the ownership, but, um, I do want to give credit to the owners themselves. I think Mr. Braga is joining us. Can you hear us, Eduardo? Can you hear us?
You're muted.
Yes. I mean, yeah.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm very good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You are, you are the, um, can you explain what your position is within the restaurant, and who you're, if you wanted to introduce anyone else?
Yes, I'm the manager.
You, you're the manager or the owner? I'm sorry.
Yeah, both.
Both, okay, there you go. And, and who are you joined with? Because I recognize some of these people, but we, we, do you want to introduce anyone else?
Yeah, we are tied to them.
Okay, so, um, Greg Wilson from my office has been working very closely with them, I think, um, and, uh, I, I want to say, I want to say your name, is it Natalia?
Yeah, Natalia.
Thank you, I got her. Okay, so, um, she's been, been very diligent in coming in and being very responsive, and the whole brother family, so I appreciate that. Um, and so the, the restaurant owner, now this new ownership, and so you're looking for the transfer of the license of the previous owner to your own. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right, so this is a public hearing. I'll start by seeing if there's any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you for coming. I have a quick question. You're not going to change, or are you going to, not, nothing's going to change about the look or feel of that little restaurant, or basically going to be a transition that will be seamless?
Yes.
And then my other question is, I try to ask this of most businesses when they begin new here in Maynard. Uh, was there anything in particular that drew you to Maynard?
Uh, I mean, I have, I have another restaurant in the valley. Rosini's.
Could, could you speak up a little bit? We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, I'm owning another restaurant in local, like, uh, Rosini's in the valley, too. And Maynard is a close to, so, good for me, like, uh, both restaurants close, well, the other one.
So you have another restaurant, do you?
Yes, Rosini's in the valley.
Oh, okay, all right. Maybe I've seen you there before.
Yeah. Under oath, maybe, yes.
Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to any public comments at this time. Okay, I'm seeing no public comments. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the Section twelve restaurant, all alcoholic beverages license transfer application for Brave Family Corp., D B A, Maynard Pizza Bar, at one forty-nine Main Street, authorizing use of digital signatures if
Seconded.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and then there's a separate motion.
Yes, I will, uh, also move to authorize the Town Administrator's Office to distribute the Section twelve restaurant, all alcoholic beverages licensed for Brave Family Corp. At one forty-nine Main Street, on approval from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, the A B C C, authorizing use of digital signatures approved. That motion essentially removes the need to have this matter come back for us as it used to, with irregularity.
Seconded.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
I'll move to close the public hearing at seven thirty-two.
Seconded.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, congratulations and, and good luck, uh, with the continued operation of Maynard Pizza and Bar.
We've got another one.
Yeah, they stick around. Ah, sorry, and we're moving on to common vic license, which is not a public hearing, so this is just a simple motion, correct? Does anybody have any questions? We've done these before on the common vic license. Chris, are you saying something?
No, I was answering a question.
The new common vic, victory and entertainment licenses at Maynard Pizza and Bar, one forty-nine Main Street, Maynard, under the corporation Brave Family Corp., authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Seconded.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, now, congratulations. You've got both Tom and Mike and the Alex and Lenny.
Congratulations, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And that brings us to seven thirty-four, which is perfect, because the next public hearing is scheduled for seven thirty, so. Uh, we begin with the public notice. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter one six six, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty P M. Via hybrid meeting, both in person at one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, oh one, seven, five, four, and remotely via Zoom for the posted Maynard Select Board Meeting Agenda's instructions. The petition, the petition and plan are being presented by the N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England Inc. For the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one pole, number fifty-seven slash fifteen dash two A on Main slash Nathan Street, Maynard, approximately four hundred and eighteen feet east of Florida Road. A copy of this petition is filed with the Town Clerk and Select Board Office. Greg, do you want to give an overview of what this, this pole is for?
Yeah, so, um, everyone's familiar with the work, it's been done by, it's done, uh, development at one fifteen Main Street, the, and we are flown this evening by the usual, um, Chris Crosby, who's starting by his cell phone, it looks like the five oh eight number, that's her. And she's, she's, we do the work before this, pretty common practice, uh, where the board is asked to authorize, uh, the replacement of the pole, the, particularly management roles to, to Uh the place for the pole, the moving pole, particularly management rules to to follow with. So Chris, anything else you want to add? Christine, you want to add anything?
Uh yes, this is Christine Cosby from EverSource, and um we are petitioning the town for grant of location. For new pole fifty-seven over fifteen dash two A, um located at Main and Nathan Street. And the purpose of the new pole would be to provide electric service to the new building out there that's under construction, one fifteen Main Street.
Right. This is good, we're gonna give the new buildings juice.
Uh very good. Any questions from the board?
Just trying to get an idea of where, if you know, I could see, uh I'm not good at looking at reading these plans.
Yeah.
Um and is this a permanent pole or is it a temporary pole? Because it looks like it's right in front of the building. Um but it looks like it looks like it might be near the C V S side, because it's a parking lot. Uh help me out.
Uh it's actually the pole is in the rear of the building. Um it's 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 in the air, it's in the rear of the building. It's it's lined up with the other poles that are out there. There's a parking lot there.
Right, so as as.
And and I'm sorry, and it is a permanent pole. It's a it's pole. It's solely, it's solely dedicated for the um electric service. It's gonna go from overhead to underground, the electric service to the building. So it is a permanent pole.
It's behind the building, sort of up against the parking lot?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, yes.
About parking lot, okay.
Uh you're familiar with the brothers, see, is anything else you want to add? Way to describe me was uh rear, the uh. There's the the island where the parking meters fairly close to their.
Uh I was just confused because I thought it was in the front of the building along Main Street and that it would just look kind of bad.
No, we'll try to hear the back parking, C V S is here. Right. It's kind of in itself, yeah, you're trying to, right.
Yeah, I I I was viewing it as being in front of the building, like just making the thing look like, that that's good.
Let me just allow that there are terms is uh main is.
Okay.
Uh we do have one question from our um about the, a request to remove a pole that exists at the same site. Is there any update on that?
Yes, that's a separate work order. Um we uh actually, I went out there today to take a look at this job and ever, the EverSource crews were out there. Um that particular project involved replacing two existing poles, installing the stub pole, which the board. Um select board approved back in February. And um they needed to do the transfers before they could take that pole, that pole that's right by the water there. They're looking to get that out of there, so um they were out there today, they were doing transfers to the new poles. I believe that they were going to be taking the transformer off of that pole, that the pole that that is being removed. And I um I can, I could follow up with the the overhead construction folks to find out. When they have it scheduled to take the pole out, but I think it's it's gonna be very soon.
But that's progress, so I appreciate hearing that. Yeah, follow up would would be great. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I will, I'll follow.
Thank you. Any other questions in the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve a grant of location to install one pole, number fifty-seven slash fifteen dash two A. To provide electric service to one fifteen Main Street, Maynard. The petition and plan is being presented by the N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon. For the purpose of obtaining a grant of location, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. And. I'll move to close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine P M.
Second.
All in favor, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Very good. Uh the poll is approved. Thank you very much, and the public hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, we will move on to item ten, and we've invited the town moderator to join us uh. We'll say a few months ago, received a report from the Acton League of Women Voters um looking at. Uh town meeting attendance and several other items uh in several surrounding towns, including Maynard. And we thought it would be good to invite the town moderator to come in, have a discussion about dependence to town meeting um and brainstorm some. Some ideas for improvement, see what's working, what's not working. And so thank you for joining us, uh Mr. Moderator. So let me just pull this open, may close all the electric poll hearings. Um and I think we we had uh probably two months ago, a chance to discuss this as a board. Um amongst ourselves a little bit and decided to invite you. Have you had a chance to read over the um League of Women Voters Report?
Uh take down the town water, yes, uh I have.
And you want to start us off with the conversation, any particular feedback or anything that you noted from your end? Um and then we can kind of open up to the board, and I think we just wanted to have a discussion overall.
Well, um it's a subject that has the stuff, not only in Maynard, but I'm an officer of. Bar代的 Association. And uh there's a discussion that goes on regularly, that how we can improve dependence uh at town meetings. Um it is a situation that across the board in the state, it's not unique to us, and by the fact that. Acton's League of Women Voters has uh done that investigation, you would see that uh it's happening everywhere. And also, I think the town court has gotten a request uh from Portland Western, uh college. And and which I agree with the funds of them as well. Um so it's. It's pretty much across the board, and I've thought about it a lot philosophically, and um. I think, you know, we all live very busy lives today, more so than fifty years ago. And um people do turn out with things important. And so I think basically the reduction in attendance over time. Uh probably is to the credit of better management of topics. And that people are content with what they see as they manage them effectively. But when something um doesn't sit well with them, or there is some particular thing that's very important to them, then they go. So uh I don't know that we're gonna dramatically change the situation. But we try very hard to do that, and as you know, uh especially with Greg. That there we have a debriefing session after every town meeting of all the participants. And uh we tried to say, you know, what did not go well that we can improve upon? What did go well that we want to make sure that we maintain and hopefully can improve upon? And so I think over time, especially with the pandemic, I think we were pretty creative in coming up with uh. Resolutions and uh got a pretty good turnout during pandemic, uh using our driving approach. Uh I've done some statistics um over forty-two town meetings going back to two thousand and one. Um we have an average attendance of two hundred and eighty-two uh attendees. Uh we have um a median. That's two hundred and ten, so you can see they they correlate fairly well. Um. The low was eighty-one and the high uh was eighteen hundred. So uh pretty, pretty wide, but uh like I said, the median, which should represent. As opposed to the average, um it's it's two ten, so. Over time, I've done a graph, there there is a slight decline. Try to line down. Um here, very, very, very slight, so over twenty-four years. Um it has not changed recently, uh considerably from the trend. So.
Is that going back to two thousand and one, as you just mentioned?
Two thousand and one, yeah. Um so uh I don't know exactly what we can do better. There were two things that. Uh was mentioned that we might think about. Uh in the uh League of Women Voters uh thing, and one of those was the babysitting, which we do offer. Uh but maybe we'd want to think about uh making that a little more robust. Meetings typically run ten thirty, eleven o'clock. The uh babysitting only lasts until nine. So maybe we can figure out how we extend that so that it's there till the end of the meeting. Uh so that might be helpful. And then one of the other things that Greg and I have shared some emails on is uh. Can we look at some of the elderly and things who don't like to drive at night, uh who have asked for Saturday. Um meetings, which uh we can't do currently under the. Truck, uh is to have transportation. Uh so maybe we could have the elderly man pick up people and uh drop them off at the meeting and then return them, and then at the end of the day. Things that the League of Women Voters said that might be a potential for increasing. But I think the increase is going to be fine. Uh I mean, it might go from two ten to two fifty, but I don't see ever getting to eight hundred or a thousand. I just don't see that in regards.
Uh one thing that's come up as a consistent theme, I think, since I joined the board, and especially recently, as I looked at the quad board, is voter education. And especially in the context of not having a local newspaper, and town meeting is often cited as a uh an opportunity. To educate voters on a wide variety of issues. Just looking back on all those town meetings, go back to two thousand and one, are there any strategies that you think are recommended or particularly successful? Or strategies that are a lot of effort, but maybe not worth the bang, not worth the buck?
So one of the things that came out of the debriefing session was whoever puts in the article. Put in a word as to why they're putting in that article, and that is now published in the uh one. Which uh that's, I believe, in the last eight years, six years, something.
Oh, you added a, I didn't know it was six years ago, but I didn't know it wasn't coming before.
Right, now, it's always been the case with clients, but it's never always been the case with the sponsor. And so that goes to your education, and I think that while it helps people understand. What the articles are all about, and how we lower the amount of questions in town meeting itself as a result of that. Uh but people may feel comfortable with that explanation when I attend. So that that's another possibility. Uh I think we have eliminated a lot of the noise. And things we don't do a second unless the move articles move differently than this uh thing. We have uh people uh pre-staged, uh close to the podium, so when they do it, we don't have to lost time, people walking back and forth to the audience. So these are all things that came out of these uh debriefing sessions that we've had all the time. To make it run better, and you know, we had uh what, thirty-six articles last time, and we did it one night. And I can tell you from the association that those numbers usually are hopefully. So. And and I'll choose my own one, but I think.
Quite you well.
Having those uh having those deep repeat sections has streamlined it significantly. The other thing we do is the PowerPoint presentations, which uh we allow every sponsor to make a presentation and explain why they're doing things. With backup information on the on the thing. We uh standardize on size and type, so it's readable anywhere in the auditory. So I think a lot of good things have happened just by sitting down afterwards and critiquing ourselves and saying, you know, what could we do better?
Certainly a tremendous improvement the last meeting with the sound system. I know that's not your control, but uh.
No, in fact, uh that came out of that.
I know, that the um the sound system two meetings ago was very, very difficult, people had trouble hearing. The last meeting was very, very, uh from my perspective, all hard of hearing guy as it is, uh much easier to uh to hear. Uh one criticism, if you want it from me, and I think I, I think I've mentioned it to you before already, but just to put it out in the public ground. Um I'm not a fan of what we evolved, and it was necessitated by COVID. Was the bundling of articles. Um I'm not a fan of it because I don't, I think that it becomes confusing for members of the uh the voting public, who may not want to vote. On a particular article, but because it's bundled, they feel that they have to, and they don't want to hold up the meeting by saying, can you please hold that one up? Um and I'm not a fan of it. I think each and every case should be standing. Uh with very few exceptions, should stand alone, stand alone. Uh I am a fan of the uh. You know, the town report and all that stuff at the beginning that we that we have certainly can be bundled in and uh approve it on motion or consent. But some of the other stuff, we had some important articles at the last meeting that I thought were appropriately bundled, namely our um. Zoning articles, one was the M B T A, and the other one was the M B T A article. The other one, I forget what what the zoning article, you know, they all ended up, ending up fine from my perspective, but I think that they deserved their own. Uh and I think we're past the COVID issue of wanting to push things along quicker. Although that's part of trying to keep people in the meeting is the time aspect of it, and I get that too. Uh but I think town meeting is supposed to be deliberative and supposed to be the legislative body that has deliberation and and. You know, debate and. By bundling things, I think sometimes we're taking that away. That's my, otherwise, if I think you've done this job, and I thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. Um you're in the minority there. Uh I have asked around uh because. Of the very things that you bring out, and that people can't necessarily uh. Feel comfortable that they. They agree with two and then they have to vote the three. Uh but the flip side is, they want to be there anyway, they don't kind of talk. Uh and that is a strong message. They they don't like going from eleven o'clock.
Oh, I get that.
The 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 alternative is to kind of opt for ten o'clock, you know, the second night, which is even worse. Uh so uh I have gotten very positive feedback about. Probably five to one versus things, and I do offer in the opening remarks and generally. Uh when we talk about the article, that if anybody wants to break them up, uh they can just ask. And I don't have any problem. Uh and I only have to get one in that case. Uh whereas a secret ballot, I usually ask for five, so makes a distinction there. But um people seem to feel comfortable with it, and when I group them, I do group them by segment. Uh so in uh the case of um the M E D A, I believe that stood wrong.
I I remember having a conversation here before, we may have as a result of the conversation, split it up, so maybe a bad example, but there have been a few where. Um.
But typically, I would, I would group uh all of the secret ballots for D B W stuff, so that. The enterprise of the sewer and the enterprise of the water and maybe some other things, I would group those together and have them in one secret ballot. Not because they go over the half a percent of the parts. Um I find not to mix things like acceptance of streets with sewer and water.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that, that's.
I would group maybe three or four acceptance of streets all into one, even though they might be three separate articles. And the other thing that I do, or I try to do, is things that seem to be somewhat related. I allow them to both be discussed simultaneously, so that they can ask a question, well, how does this affect that? Whereas normally, you couldn't do that, you have to stay within the bounds. Whereas normally you couldn't do that if you have to stay within the bounds of a particular item. And by opening it up to having discussions for multiple articles all at the same time that are somewhat related. People can say, well, if I do this and I do that, and it, it makes it for an easier flow and, and uh, actually reduces the number of questions. Uh, so that's my thought process as to why I do it. I'm open to things, but I, I, I will say that uh, the more people seem to appreciate the volume they have, they don't appreciate.
I, I agree with the town moderator that the bundling is necessary so that we, but I think in the recent meetings, if we hadn't bundled, we would have gone over and it would have forced a second night and that would have caused a severe drop off in attendance.
October eleven thirty.
Or, or, and one meeting did even with bundling. Um, I think the, there was a concern with one particular bundling at the last meeting. Um, but then one brave soul got up and asked for it to be voted separately. And after five people agreed, it was allowed to be voted separately. And when I talked to a few people afterwards, they didn't know that was an option. And I think that's just a very simple making sure it's clear to everybody that if they want to separate it out, there's a very simple procedure to do so. And if the whole room agrees to keep it bundled, then nobody needs to say anything and we can move forward with that. And that can kind of mean the best of both worlds there.
And the other thing is, actually, uh, I am, I know about because it's just easy to, to do a vote. It's, it's time getting the councils to go out and collect the ballots. Uh, you know, each one of them takes five minutes. And so if I could do three, I'd save ten minutes right there.
That gets to a point. And I don't know what cost. I know like towns that are wealthier than ours, uh, Wayland, Acton, Concord, have electronic uh, voting. Uh, Stowe, I think even now has electronic voting, but they just started within the last year or so. Uh, I watch a lot of town meetings, unfortunately for myself, I guess. But um, what would your, what would your thoughts be on that? I don't know what the cost, I don't know what the cost is. I think it's probably prohibitive for us, but um.
Right. It's a financial decision.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm comfortable in either. I, I, I don't have any uh, desire to go one way or the other. I'm pretty.
That can take away the need for walking around and save that portion of time at town meeting. But that's really all it saves. It's, it's convenient and time. Uh, but
Yeah.
I see a lot of towns that are going that way, but I'm, I'm sure it's really expensive.
Depends on the volume. So we, you know, I, I am an active resident. Um, and I went to the last uh, um, visit for so, sending the votes of thousands of people. But in, in which case the clickers were kind of, quit, quit. Otherwise, we'd have been there for hours and hours. They're just counting ballots. But I'd say, um, they're just very fast with those ballots, like having the election workers take, take the uh, uh, the tiny, you know, the, the baskets and um, it's fast. So I have to say that they've given a lot of credit to the volunteers at their, uh, town meetings. Uh, but there is a cost. I think, um, we brought this up with people within many times over the years, uh, with the clicker. And um, um, I'm about to offer it to the town moderator, a new town clerk. So maybe your new partner in credit when it comes to running um, the show, y'all can talk about it.
Are there any grants available for that type of thing? Any grants that might be available from the state for that?
Well, I think Stowe did it under the pandemic.
Uh, they started.
Oh, baby. That's interesting. Uh, we never thought of that. We were thinking too much about water.
I got super stressed.
Water on the brain.
Yeah. Uh, and, and several of them, I think, I think that, but there is an annual box of twelve, which can also be somewhat spicy.
You gotta maintain, you gotta make sure they all work, you know, you know.
Well, the thing is, if you buy them, you're now responsible for them and the maintenance of all of the others. And so, um, I'm typically have the expertise. And so most of the towns are renting them. So when you rent them, you're also renting the people that do it. So you're talking several thousand dollars per meeting.
Potentially. So like, I, I'm encouraged though. I, I think, as I said, uh, when the new term comes, if you want to, you want to discuss some training problems, you want to go into that, that research.
And what do we pay? Do you know what we pay for the, if we do it all? I don't know if they're volunteers, the uh, the church. Yeah, the, the, the caretaker. Which would offset some of the thousands of them, but we would have to grant.
That's all right. You're right. Would. Potentially. I mean, like, we, we probably wouldn't reduce, we still need some election workers first to do the registration.
Right, right.
Um, but yeah, we'd probably reduce our overhead a little bit.
So, uh, I turn it back to you. It's a financial decision. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I'm, I'm very.
It's not, it's not a high priority when we look at some of the other stuff we have. Town or, so, but it's uh, it's perhaps to be put on the capital.
But if you did it, I would embrace it. If you don't do it, I'm perfectly happy to continue doing what we're doing.
Um, think about the time and meaning versus engagement with the audience. What guidelines do you give to the presenters um, before each um, sponsor article, if they want to present something?
So I haven't said, um, do that.
Do you have or have not?
I have not.
Okay.
Uh, I kind of in my mind have it at like five minutes. Um, but it's not hard and fast. So for example, um, when we did the maiden processing, uh, you know, I think that half hour was like, after that presentation, it's like a half hour. Uh, and I think it should have been because there was a lot of meat there that needed to get out there to educate the voters, to make a good decision. Uh, so if I had a rule of five minutes, I would have had to impose it remotely against everybody. And I think that would have been a dessert. So I'm kind of, you know, what, what is the extent necessary to make a good presentation? Uh, in terms of questions that are asked and things, I, I try to limit that to two minutes. Not hard with that, but uh, again, you know, what is the meat serious and so? If somebody thinks the issue of it at some point, I might have to make that decision, but uh, I tried to think about how I would want to know things if I was hitting the audience. And so I made my judgment kind of based on.
Okay. Mike or Chris, any questions?
Um, I, yeah, I, I have one. I'm just wondering, you know, look at uh, certainly Foxborough and then to some extent Stowe, that aside from the um, the spikes, which are fairly obvious as to why they occur. What is it about Foxborough in particular that uh, gives them a consistently twice as many voters um, as a percentage as many? Are we aware of any um, proactive plans that they do to encourage that bigger gap consistently over twenty years?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
All right. It just happened? Is it that?
It's your audience.
Go ahead.
The uh, I, I just, you know, I think they're a more rural community, which tends to have a larger audience. Uh, the, the more um, urban communities tend to have a less of an audience, you know, densely packed and you know, we're usually uh, more ranchers than homeowners. And so um, as a percent of the population, you know, you don't do as well. I don't, I don't think it's anything in the preparation. I mean, we have a finance committee, public hearing, poorly attended every year. Uh, it's decently attended in Stowe. Uh, so it's not by anything that the finance base, it's just, we're showing up.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess it must be just be part of the culture within a town, but it, it's very evident that it's, it's consistent over this twenty year period that we have available to us. Yeah.
Foxborough has, has that culture and it's um, um, I guess they, they don't have as much. Uh, if you want to say, I mean, we've seen a big changeover in just in the, the last fifteen years of the people who attend town meeting. Unfortunately, many have passed away, that used to be regular attendees and regular questioners and whatever. You see in Foxborough, uh, and I, as I said earlier, I'm a nerd to this stuff, so I watch them. And I've seen over the years, um, the same people continue to ask questions and they're aging. But there's a younger crowd that comes in and asks, we don't have too many younger people coming in and asking questions. And um, it's, you know, I, I, I fear what will happen in twenty years when, when those of us who are aging that like to ask questions at town meeting are suddenly no longer here. Uh, because there's not, depending on the topic, I guess, there's not many uh, younger folks that ask questions.
Yeah.
My general feeling is, A is pretty well run and you get uh, a lot of people like even though taxes are high and, and I think I'm paying like nine thousand dollars a year in taxes. If you took my house and my land, and we're in Concord, even though the tax rate in Concord would be a lot lower, I'd be spending twelve thousand dollars. So I think the fact that they're paying a little more taxes might bring them out a little bit more. Whereas if you compare what actually we go in and take out of people's pockets, not talking about the tax rate, but that's only a piece. It's your assessment of the tax rate that determines how much taxes you pay. I, I get the feeling that mained population feels that they're getting value for their dollar. And so they don't necessarily come to try to cover budget with these things. They feel they're doing a pretty good job. When they're concerned, they show up.
I think you should just have to do the budget presentation next break.
You know, I, I can nothing to prove that. The feeling and conversation will be doing everything else, uh, emotive, that is obviously. But, you know, it's something that you have to do to maintain the service.
Thank you for saying that. Um,
Yeah.
Mike, Chris, any other comments or thoughts?
The, 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 the question I had was already asked previously, but I, you know, I appreciate all the, the time and thought Dick's put into, you know, going over this information with us though.
Me as well.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
He appreciates the, the time and effort you've put into going over this with us.
Well, make his, don't make his head big.
He wanted to hear you compliment him one time.
Yeah. He knows.
Any final comments or any closing remarks?
I know. I appreciate your inviting me and getting, you know, some of the discussion out there. And if anybody has any ideas to be uh, de-downing a town remainder diet. Uh, happy to hear anybody's uh, suggestions for a lot. We very much into continuous improvement, which is what the deep, deep reading sessions are all about. So uh, and we did do a survey, if you remember, you know, a couple of meetings ago. Uh, and uh, we got a very positive response, actually. Uh, people were quite happy. The only thing they weren't happy with is uh, probably who said they weren't happy, there was different views was when that. People didn't like uh, in the evening, usually the elderly, uh, because they don't like driving at night. Uh, and they find that to be a problem. And so they don't necessarily come. And the younger people don't like Saturday because that's when the kids are having baseball games and football games and the kids are doing things. And so there's a group that strongly wanted the weekends and there's a group, a strong one with weekday nights. Uh, and uh, there was other things in there, but that, that really I, I don't know how to resolve.
There, there was no perfect, perfect answer on that one, if I remember correctly.
And that's uh, is what brought this guy, maybe uh, having the van pick up some of the oldies for those people who don't like lighting at night. And that might help improve attendance, but no matter what we do, it's, it's uncontrolled, it's not going to be significant. It's not going to double or anything.
Okay.
Well, say, Julian has a question.
Oh, hi, Julian. How are you this evening?
Hi, how are you? Um, uh, this is Jillian Prandergast. I am on the finance committee and uh, I am also a town resident. Uh, I think that's all the stuff I'm supposed to announce um, for myself. But I did want to mention, um, I think that it might help attendance if we were able to get drafts of the articles sooner. So for example, for the special town meeting, we don't have, the timeline is really tight and we only have a single meeting before our written comments and our votes are due to be included in the printed warrant. Uh, which is a really big ask. And I feel like every year the timeline gets tighter. Uh, and there's potentially less time for us to review and sort of vet the articles and understand them and explain them in a way in this finance committee sponsor comments that can help the townspeople understand the implications of their vote. Um, you know, either yes or no. And I just wanted to sort of mention that as, you know, understanding the timelines and when things are potentially due, especially for the printing to be included in that thing that's mailed out to the residents, I think could really help uh, engage the townspeople. Thank you.
That's one thing that comes up regularly in the debriefing section. And I know that Greg had sent out a memo earlier this year, asking people to uh, even send out a form of your intent, even if we haven't got the final wording with your justification, so they can go to the finance committee for evaluation early on, so that we can get a deeper meaning in the thing. So I agree with that comment a hundred percent. And anything that you folks can do, post boards and things to submit early, even if they don't have the final wording, is going to go a long way in making us uh, more streamlined.
That's well, well put. And I appreciate that comment, Julian. And it is tight. Um, and so it's a balance of how early uh, there's no, there's no timeline set according to charter or bylaws. It says when the initial draft has to be submitted. So I come up with the date Greg Wilson and I do based on sort of backdated according to when it needs to be published and we buy select order. We've kind of come up with a couple of weeks ahead of time. But if it's too far back, then that allows potential to change. And then it's, it's almost like a and then it's almost like done with the effort. And it's really difficult to get people, and by nature, it's progress. It's, it's hard to get people to submit stuff until they actually, even then, I'm, I'm like going to department meetings and otherwise I'm saying, no, I was serious. This is the deadline. Um, it, it is what it is. So no, I appreciate that, uh, Jillian, and you'll get them from us as soon as we can. Um, we have a couple in the, on deck right now. We'll get them over to, I have, I got a couple today. I mean, like, we'll, we just, as, as we get them, I'll take a quick look at them. I might have a quick edit or two, but usually it's settled.
And the other change that did take last, they placed last year is that they weren't submitted to the finance committee, considering you folks approved them to go on. Whereas now they're going in, or they should be going in immediately to the finance committee. And then they just get withdrawn or two guys drawn a book, but at least they see them and they're able to go ahead and do some.
So generally, generally we do send the draft to the finance committee with the understanding that it may be that they didn't buy a board or whatever. But um, maybe there might have been a couple of, I mean, there might have been a couple, especially with thirty six articles. There could have been one or two that I get late, where they're not done, or, or town council says, oh no, you gotta change the wording, whatever. So many these.
Anything else, Julian?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any other thoughts, questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, for joining us. And we're looking forward to the run up to the next town meeting in October.
Mr. Chair, I did, on that note, I do, um, being on vacation, I, I apologize. I'm a little behind. But I did want to share with the board and therefore the public, the current list that I do have. Uh, but again, these are not hard set. So, so I didn't, I, I'm surprised at you with this, Mr. Chair. I really apologize. Um, but would you like me to kind of go down on right now, or do that in the middle of the meeting? Or maybe circle back to this later, whatever you want. I just want to, I want to give you the option and let you know.
I think we can add that uh, to the next agenda.
Oh, you have to look at a next agenda. I just, I want to know if the board wanted to go.
Let's do a quick review and uh, okay, we have the chair of the finance committee here. She'll get to hear what's going on.
Okay. But with the, with the caveat, uh, that um, these are not the, like, this, this is just like the running list that we have. So that, so traditionally we do amend the channel, general fund, the general fund budget based on what we have in the state budget. And I plan on presenting to the legislature the version of my recommendations. So we don't, I don't have that, I believe. The, we did get an article from the CPC, the Community Preservation Fund, um, for a couple of corporations related to the Lorenzo Nater water drop and Ice House thing. Um, we did get the uh, debt sweep and bonding authorization for nuclear just along that building from the school wing at that the other day. And on that note, I did. And uh, on that note, I did have um, the Treasury Office ask on council to take a look at it and then all accounts of amendments. And so I forward that back to the school management. Um, I did get a uh, uh, request for a whole petition from the corner store. Uh, do y'all know where the corner store is? Down the hill from uh, Bancroft School, Royal School, Bancroft Street. They wanna, they wanna expand to an all out of the list. We did that a couple years ago for Russell's meeting. They want to do the same thing. So I sent it over to town council and asked if it's, if it's legit, like if it's good to go. And then um. And then a couple from Public Works, um, the use of water retained earnings, so like water enterprise retention. That's like the free cash for water enterprise, um, Justin's looking, Justin Mark was looking to. Yeah. Get a, like a modification back with the truck that we've already acquired. Um, he's looking to use sewer retained earnings to do a analysis of the wastewater treatment. And he's looking to do an acquisition of uh, utilities, I'm sorry, sewer water, sewer utilities around the Asabet River. We need to upgrade some of our sewer pumps that go, that send the, send the sewage under the river then to the wastewater treatment plant. And so we might need to expand the size of those pumps and therefore make some improvements into the private. And then, um. This is a big one, actually, the uh. Justin Marco is creating, but I haven't yet seen yet, it's ten thousand five hours, um, creating a new enterprise for solid waste. So the, there's been a solid waste recycling task force has been meeting for more than a year. And um, the expected result is a recommendation to create an enterprise.
Will we see that task force at the next meeting?
So, yeah, so um, Justin and I met today and the expectation is it should come sort of hand in hand, like the recommendation is. The second one.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was, I mean, there's a couple other, but I, I don't have this all details on this one, but. Anyway, so Julian, just kind of like, that was a preface to what you'll see as soon as it comes out of my office. We go to the finance meeting. So not in most articles, but some heavy hitters.
Yeah, and I said, there's no planning board articles or plan for this.
It seems to me that the uh, that last letter that you mentioned, um. This board hasn't had any discussion. I, I think it's incredible to say, let's have it presented to us next meeting and vote, put it on the warrant.
That's fair.
Without having any discussion at all, that's to me to be awfully rushed.
No, no, I, I appreciate that and I, and I don't want the board to rush. Um, so when I see, and I haven't seen the presentation, so if it seems to be complicated. Yeah, I, I gotta say.
I, I agree with David, let's, let's take a look, let's see if we can get it done, but let's. Let's make sure if we don't do it, if there's any downsides or delaying from one time meeting to another, that I understand that. So we'll, we'll get us all the picture together before the decision needs to be made, but I, I agree with your. Your initial that, you know, something of that significance to pass it on the same night. Justin, uh, briefly, Justin, please.
Hi, yes, so we understand the sensitivity, sorry, Justin Marco DBW Director, sorry, I'm joining remotely tonight. Um, David, to your point, we do actually understand the sensitivity for this request and we wish we could have uh, the recommendation sooner. Unfortunately, timeline delays are, are becoming quite the issue in regards to when we present our final recommendation. And our shot at enterprise adoption and our contract sunset. So this may be a situation where it is a very thorough discussion in one night. But just be aware, you'll have a, have a large presentation that will determine or help guide your process. The recommendation is about ninety percent complete. Um, within the enterprise fund adoption recommendation, we are not looking to reallocate the current distribution of general fund allocations. Versus revenue I E stickers. So it's not a adoption of an enterprise fund in a complete shift of financial burden. It will come with a five-year financial projection process. But in order for us to bid out a contract at the end of this current contract, we need to have the enterprise fund adopted well in advance. So it's really a timeline issue.
All right, thank you, Justin. We'll cover that in more detail next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so I appreciate, uh, Mister Chair, a lot of me, I just want to be transparent about where we were, but, but, and I didn't know Gillian's come up with it, but I was. I was planning on asking you to do that every week. It just is, of course, she's doing her job, but it's, it's, yeah.
Okay, any questions on the list? Thank you. Any questions on the list Greg just presented to us?
Thank you, Mister Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that will conclude item ten. Thank you very much, Mister Moderator. We'll move on to item eleven, uh, which is a change, a licensing change to the Asabet Village Co-op. Uh, and I believe this is a change in the board, correct?
That's right, Mister Chair, so there's a change of three members on the board we call up. I think it's Mister Phil, Mister Tello, Mister Kenna, and uh, the emperor inches in the board, for packets, but this is relatively procedural, it's just.
We've seen similar items before. Any questions on this change of the board directors for the Asabet Village Co-op?
What's the necessity for the board to have any interest in who the directors of the co-op?
Cause there's a liquor license.
Yeah.
Because of that?
True apartment is a local license.
Just because, so it's like a change of a management and a liquor.
Like we do for the office. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the section fifteen, package store wine and malt beverages license amendment application for the Asabet Village Food Cooperative, Inc. DBA Asabet Co-op Market at eighty-six Powder Mill Road, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second, all in favor? David, yes. Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, we'll move on to item twelve, which is uh, a receipt of funding from the capital fund program or CFP grants.
That's right, Mister Chair, so this is a federal financial uh, program and it goes towards uh, Mayor's Housing Authority. Um, but, you know, for the boards, um, just to remind the board that, that it is very much a separate entity. Mainard Housing Authority is uh, as indicated, it's federally funded and state funded program. But um, for whatever reason, this does require the executive um, offices, that's this level, it does require your authority to sign up. On a receipt of this funding, it's a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, intended for Don Grove. Um, Bobby Morris is the director over there in the housing authority, um, to provide us with this information. Looks as if procedural.
Any questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendment uh, to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, Plaid Office of Public and Indian Housing. Twenty twenty-four Capital Fund Program, CFP, annual contributions contract for Don Grove, one through thirty-two, Don Road. In the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars as presented.
Second.
All in favor? David, yes. Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. Anytime money's coming in, we'll take.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to item thirteen, the local initiative program application for local action units.
So this, this is, this is complicated as, as these things always are. Um, yeah, I'm gonna do the best I can to uh, explain and then that's why I still was here to correct me. So um, the board had already approved the local initiative program application for that. Again, it's relative to the amount of how, four thousand units are going to be going into a pellet, in this case, it's one fifteen Main Street, as we discussed earlier, the politicians, the development. Downtown. Um, the board approved the original lift application in January of twenty twenty-three. Since then, uh, some aspects of the site plan has changed and therefore the local housing trust met last night. And re-approved what they had already approved. And then therefore that appeal now comes back to the select. And so the, I'm, I'm, my, my stat is refreshing this, like, for to prove this updated version that the, for housing trust. Hopefully this can set us up for safe harbor, so safe harbor, if the board's not, or the public's not aware, um. Each town um, is, is uh, measured according to its formal housing. Um, it's called a subsidized housing index. Uh, and if you have above ten percent or if you meet some other criteria such as a house inspection plan or. Then you can be what's considered safe out, safe harbor, which allows you to block an unfriendly forty B development, which is. Reference to matching a law that allows for developers to kind of go around a lot of the road. And, and you don't want that. You want, you want developers to abide by local permitting, ideally they work hand in hand with these spouses. But the town right now is not in safe harbor. So this is, I, I mean, of course, I would recommend the board approve this. But it helps us if, if this can get to. Um, E O H L C, which is used to be A C D and sort of like help us, that would prevent any developer must kind of do untended.
I would, I would put one, oh yeah, on your statement, Greg.
Yeah.
And I object to the comment that the town is not in safe harbor because I think that at the time of. One twenty-nine Parker Street um, project, when it was being proposed. We um, established that we indeed were at the time under safe harbor based on. One of the categories that, that provides for safe harbor includes um, the percentage of land that's available for use for affordable housing. Uh, that was um. That was all worked up at the time by, um, I think Andrew Scrivener McLean. It was presented, um, a lot of people in town have a copy of the report and since that time we've only added affordable units. So there's no way we could have dropped off. So um, I think we are, although that's not typically considered one of the traditional. Uh, approaches towards safe harbor. We don't have ten percent, although this will get us very close. If not, we get a one-year. Uh, moratorium on safe harbor because of the fact that we have approved. And we are also making progress. The other thing that you mentioned, including um, the um, the housing production plan. And we can establish that we are making progress. And so I'm comfortable in, in believing that under any number of standards, we have met the requirements. As the spirit of the, of the uh, of the safe harbor. Not because we're trying to avoid um, affordable housing, rather because we have reason, we can't, we can't. We can't afford affordable housing based on a lack of infrastructure and water availability and, and whatever. I think we would welcome some development.
We welcome a lot of it.
Yeah, but it's uh, it's the fact that we just can't afford it, so we have to protect ourselves and we're doing so. So, you know, like the comment I wanted to make is from a public perspective. I don't think it's fair to say we are not, we do not have safe harbor right now. We do, it's just that it, it's, it's not well known. Because that particular uh, research is not, it was produced at the time and it was produced as a developer who was. Um, proposing a forty B at the time and they backed away, they recognized that we were appropriately covered.
Right, so that, that was maybe more than what this board needed, but it's just to tell you, so anyways, I had a recommendation for.
Any other questions or comments on item thirteen? And that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the local initiative program application for local action units for Maynard Square, one fifteen Main Street. Maynard as presented, authorizing the chair to sign if approved and further to authorize the chair to execute any other documents which may be required. To effectuate the approval of the A L A U and reporting of any required documents, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? David, yes. Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, very good. Uh, moving on to one contract fourteen A for lead service line inventories and replacements.
That's right, so Mister Chair, um, so Justin's a little on the others, but I'm sure he will step in if I say something incorrect here. Uh, I'll try to do the favor. So um, the town um, has been granted three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Uh, towards the town's plans to do a lead service line assessment and um, and then basically announces of our, of our water lines. And it also contributes towards planning to address splits or let in our, in our bikes. Uh, so this is gonna go a long ways, this, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, but obviously this does require a number of contracts uh, between us and the state entity. So therefore, my recommendation is to have the board authorize myself and Justin to sign those. Most of it's digital, but the state does need to see the motion that says he and I can sign this standard here. But it's great, it, it's really helpful towards our, our long-term needs and address from the, oh, help the.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
As I said just a few minutes ago, we'll accept money anytime we can get it to you.
Mike, Chris, anything on this one?
No.
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to authorize the town administrator and director of public works to approve and sign the agreement with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. In the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for planning to assist completing lead service line projects as presented. And authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. Moving on to item fifteen, we have two uh, different items. The first is um, a cannabis social equity policy. And do you want to set this up?
So this is um, still the, who I prefer to, without giving this title. Uh, the executive director for the offices services, so um, all things fun outside of town mall, that's what Steve does. So um, Steve has been working very closely with town council, represented by currently Liz Lydon, which is. And uh, the two of them have been tackling uh, changes to the uh, state's laws relative to cannabis industry. Um, so, which we do have, here, we have two active jobs and then we have two um, applicants. You know, we have one that is secure in a minute and then we have uh, the existing um, applicant. Which I forget to enable a lot of the time, I think. But either way, um, so in consideration of these changing laws. Stephen and this have been working together, we're proposing to the board this evening, um, relative to social equity policies. And um, we're taking that. Steve Silver's being executive director of Ops, Miss Services. So the cannabis social equity policy um, was put in, was signed by Governor Baker. Uh, in May twenty twenty-two and just of it is to promote uh, social equity in cannabis industry. Uh, specifically to regress historical iniquities um, that fell on certain segments of the population um, in, you know. In the war against drugs. So now with legalization of marijuana, the idea is to get uh, populations that had. Been, you know, disproportionately affected by the war on drugs and especially uh, against um. In, you know, in the trade of uh, marijuana cannabis to now uh, be to. To kind of perceive the preference um, in, in the, in legalization and legal industry uh, because of the injuries that they had suffered. So as part of that, uh, the Commonwealth has asked municipalities to adapt social equity, all social equity policies. Um, which you see before you hear, uh, and. I think from a procedural standpoint, when we get into the voting on the final paragraph. Uh, of the town's social equity policy is something that we will adopt first and then the overall social equity policy. Um, will be second, and I will ask Liz to correct me if I'm wrong there. But uh, essentially what the, the policy represents here is uh. In a nutshell, fifty percent of cannabis businesses operating in Maynard at any given time must be owned by social equity applicants. These are uh, official applicants with the uh, state's uh, cannabis control commission who are recognized and uh, as social equity applicants. Um, and for, and so we have to give, we have to give. Agreements, those community agreements and licensing at a basically a one-to-one uh, ratio. Um, to be for every social equity applicant, you could then have one non-social equity applicant who has a license to um, run their. Their shop in the town community. Uh, besides that, the policy just says in, in brief, um. That, you know, it gives, it gives the procedures of how people will. That, you know, it gives it gives the procedures of how people will be uh evaluated in terms of um. Social equity poll, oh. Their social equity uh application. Me, that, sorry, um. Oh, I think you have. Just that, yes, it just there's that, that's a consideration and then also uh. There's other things, there's other stuff the town has to take, so just public signing the policy on its website, et cetera, and I'll hand it over to Liz, I'm sorry.
No, you did good. I just want to emphasize uh it it hit the wave tops, but from a practical standpoint, which is in your notes um. Um, both rise and well, Masswell Spring, the ones that are already existing, our grandfather did. So when he was referring to fifty percent, he was referring to going forward. So um in theory, if um reversed this evening and Sugarloaf was the name of the other. If both of those are social equity, so if those were to be approved, we've already. Well exceeded our fifty percent though, because we don't have any other non-social equity going forward. So. We we would be able to take to non-social equity if there was any to down that.
Good evening, Attorney Lyden, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Anything to add?
Yes, so um I just want to clarify. The Cannabis Control Commission uh recently promulgated regulations and a model. Bylaw to clarify what their policy is and this. Uh, policy that you have in front of you is based on a model that they previously uh posted on their website and was adapted for the town. Um, as part of the regulations, the town is required to uh streamline permitting for social equity applicants. Post um all of the requirements for permitting on the town's website. Create a website or a page on the website that is dedicated to um marijuana applications. And post the um zoning requirements. Uh contact information for someone within town that they can reach out to if they have questions. Put the applications or links to the applications on the website um and. List how many applicants the town has received for H C As and. Of those applicants, how many have been social equity applicants and who was approved? And the reasoning for denial if someone was denied. And so. Um, that, this policy is the first step. It basically said that you will do all of those things. And then the next step would be to implement that policy, meaning to create the website and post all of that information. And the additional requirement of the regulations is that. There are three options to comply with um an additional component. And the most straightforward, easiest way to comply with the regulations. Is that piece that I put at the bottom of the social equity policy, which is for the town to adopt. A local approval process for equity applicants that is administered on a one to one basis. So there is. Other options, but those options include um adopting the state's model bylaw, which would require a town meeting vote. And essentially says what you have here. Um, and then. The second piece would be adopting regulations, but as an alternative to those two processes. You can simply um adopt a local approval process for equity applicants that's administered on a one to one basis. So. Um, that's what you have included in this policy. It's a little presumptuous because you haven't done that yet. But if you do that tonight, then that would be incorporated here and stated in the policy. And then that would go up on the website as well.
Thank you. And so the um policy we're looking at here, the language isn't necessarily Maynard specific per se, but rather is. Using what we know to be approved by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yes, so this was um based on the model and then. Um, there's a provision in here that's left blank for you to decide, which would be specific to Maynard. If you want to offer a percentage reduction, reduction of special permit fee, or you can put. Uh, a reduction in any H C A that is um charged to the um establishment. Or you don't have to do that at all. So so that's one of the options that I left as just discretionary for um the board to consider.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Um, my first observation is uh, this again is policy that's being presented to us, asked for us to vote on this evening, and that's the violation of our own. Uh, policy, but I understand, I I don't know if there's a um. Is there a critical nature of voting on this this evening, given that we have a social equity uh applicant here in front of us? Or is this something that can be uh reviewed? Because this is the first time I've really sat down and and heard about it and listened to it, whatever. And uh, as I say, the board has a. It's on internal policy that we don't like to approve policies if it's the first night we've heard it uh without having a chance to talk and talk.
I understand that. I think um so this was supposed to be approved uh last July, I believe. Um, so a year ago, but. The regulations, uh the Cannabis Control Commission has been slow to implement. Everything that it was required to do. And so as a result of that, they didn't post a model, you know. Until it was already due, and then they didn't post um model regulations until I think two months ago. And so the enforcement for this is not going to occur until next May. And so it's not. Required that you approve it tonight. Um, but it it was already due, and so that's the only urgency, but. There's no enforcement taking place yet. And so if you want to sit with it and continue it to another meeting, that that's okay as well. And it's not required that you implement um the one to one. Before you do this, but I would still recommend it.
So I think part of David's question was, does the timing of the passage of this policy relative to the um if we were to pass the. Item fifteen B, which is a host community agreement. Um, is that the triggering point for being in compliance with cannabis social equity policy, or is it later down the line?
No, so as, so um what I inequently stated was. You can still approve the H C As tonight and you don't have to have that policy in place. However, um it is good practice given the regulations that are in effect now. To to approve social equity applicants on a one to one basis.
Would would the approval of the H C A for the applicant be in any way contradictory to the. Let's presume the the board goes to a future date. For this social equity policy process. Would it, would it anyway sort of conflict?
No.
Alright, good. So in other words, um would so would Sugarloaf count as part of the?
It says so, yes.
So it would, but the other two that are currently in operations would not count towards the one to one.
That's right.
So I think one thing that that might happen, if you don't approve that policy of. Um implementing a one to one ratio now and you approve so to social equity applicants. Now, if you approve it after these two are approved, going forward, you would also have to approve. Um. A social equity applicant before likely another applicant.
That's that's contradictory to what I just asked.
That's what I I agree with. Had we already, um, Sugarloaf?
So Sugarloaf, I believe, uh um may have been an amendment.
So, well, I guess we can look that up, but I I thought the board had already heard Sugarloaf, they were getting the next our specialties. So.
But that.
Yeah.
Well, that gets to my my question here, Attorney Lyden, um relative to. The policy, because I don't expect you to come back next week or next meeting to uh discuss this um. But what it. And I'm not a big huge fan of, especially in our small community of having hundreds of of. Uh marijuana places, but if they want to come to Maynard, we, you know, we listen to them. Uh, so my question is. Uh, to Greg's point that he just made, Sugarloaf was proved probably two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
Maybe a little less than that. But if if we approved this policy. And Sugarloaf's been approved, but they haven't activated. And according to this, um, the way I read it anyway. That they must begin operations before we can then approve somebody else. Are we not blocking? Non-social equity businesses that might want to come in because another business is slowly taking their time to. Get up and running?
No, so. I I do follow you. Um. The. Their H C A was already signed um and Sugarloaf is an amendment to their prior H C A, and so. They um. They they wouldn't be affected by this.
Okay, but but let's move on from Sugarloaf and say the next business that comes in. Is a social equity business and they get an approval. And then they spend three years, like two and a half years, like um. Like Sugarloaf has, and does that prevent another business that may be interested in coming to Maynard? From opening up because we have to follow our policy and we can't. According, I I read something here that I thought said that they had to have. Uh uh opened their operations before the non-social equity, the one to one can can come in.
I but isn't it, there's a statutory obligation to have for every municipality to have at least fifty percent social equity businesses. Licensed or I don't know, in operation. So it's regardless of the policy, the policy is just. The town reiterating its, you know, or echoing approval of what's already law.
Yeah, so that is the law. Um, it doesn't say, and it it hasn't been clarified yet, and and that is a really good question because. As I'm looking at it, it does say um licensees operating in the host community, and I don't know what they define that as. If they have to have their final license, if operating is considered having an H C A and um. I mean, normally it would be considered actually making sales, right?
My, that's the way I am interpreting it. So, you know, my concern would be that we give an H C A to a business. And they sit on it and another business comes to us and it's really great. And they're not social equity and they can't open up theoretically, that's my question, because the other one's sitting on it. For God knows what reason. And it doesn't appear there's any way around that because the law is the way the law is written.
Right.
But that's the type of thing I'd like to know the answer to when we're talking about a policy to make sure we understand what we're approving before we do.
I have gotten a contact inform, then contact information for someone at the Cannabis Control Commission. I can reach out to them and see if they've offered any guidance on that. Uh, I also. Um, in the H C As that I've been drafting, I s- I typically add language. That says uh they must commence operations within a year to prevent this from happening.
Yeah, that type of thing would help us then to make sure that that we sort of captured. But can you do that in an in a um. Social equity H C A?
Well.
Haven't done it in a social equity H C A yet because, I mean. Part of that is. If they are not operating yet, yeah, I haven't done it yet because they've been typically given the model. Um. This is such a nuanced and evolving.
But it would still be good for us to expedite, uh, if the board still wish to expedite Rivers' application this evening, because. That at least we're not delaying it any further, like.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you put that off.
Yeah, I'm trying to make a relation of the earlier question of like, do if the board doesn't take any action of the policy this evening, which I agree with, the board should. Even if it. Does it in any way conflict with the the next item? It sounds like, sounds like the board can still take action if the board wishes. On the reverse H C A application, because it's advantageous.
And have account towards the policy. Cause and but my interpretation of policy here, and I'd like to get clarification of this before we discuss the next meeting, is it's going through the entire local process. And the H C A is only one step along the process. The applicant comes back. Uh, after approval from the C C C to the board selecting for a license. So to me, that's probably the triggering point when. You're finalizing and you're going to count your one to one. So I, if I was not a social equity applicant and there wasn't, you know, clearly I wasn't going to get that license, I would. Hold off on putting an H C A and we shouldn't make that clear. Um, but to me, just read language I have, there's no. Yeah, there's no reason we can delay on the social equity policy and then still consider Rivers natural as the next item.
Yeah, yeah, I would say about fifteen B. It's.
Okay.
Uh, just a confluence of circumstances that uh fifteen B that uh. Uh, Mrs. Rivers happens to be a social equity applicant, just consider her application on the merits. And if the, with fifteen A, it's either that. If we, if the policy was passed, then we would kind of quote unquote get credit for it according to the policy. Or if you decide to, you know, delay and deliberate more, then we don't get the quote unquote credit. But the fact that there has to be this even balance, social equity and non-social equity. Licensees operating in the town at any given time, that's statute. So. I mean, effectively, yeah, you, we could find ourselves in a position where somebody puts an application and because of the the ratio, we would have to say. You must wait. And as just to reiterate, Liz said, it is constantly evolving. C C C is a bit. Snake without a head at this point, um, and hopefully that will be rectified soon. It is very dynamic.
Again, my own perspective, uh. I'm not, I'm not anxious to jump about, you know, getting fifteen marijuana places in, but I also don't want to. Uh jeopardize a business that might be good for us because of a policy that we have.
Alright, so it looks like we won't be taking a motion on fifteen A, but we'll bring it up for the next meeting. But that being said, we'll have to have a efficient conversation in the next meeting. Are there any other questions on the cannabis social equity policy?
Well, David touched on the question I was going to ask, so it's, I'm good.
Alright, very good. So we'll um put that back on the agenda for next time.
We're jelling tonight, everybody will have us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody will have a couple more weeks to review. Uh, and so we will move on to fifteen B, which is uh an H C A um. Uh applicant, Rivers Natural Healing, forty two Main Street.
So I think we're joined speaking by, yeah, and get this rivers, where I think you all have been.
Yes, it's been a while, several months ago. Good evening, Miss Rivers, how are you?
Good evening, I'm doing well, thank you. How about yourself?
Uh, very good, thank you. Um, you want to start, Steve, or can we go right to the applicant?
Uh, I mean, just in in brief, uh, this rivers is, uh, you approved, this this board has approved the the H C A. Under to begin uh negotiation of it uh several weeks ago, uh, just to recall. Mrs. Rivers, she's a barrel retailer at forty two Main Street, uh, and uh. We had promised her previously that we would have this on the agenda, but because of that kind of uh blocks that was going on with C C C. We had to wait for the tablet to be revised because C C C was actively um denying uh H C As on the basis of. Uh, their configuration, the previous ones that had been issued such as to uh rise and wellspring. That that form no longer is in existence. They took out certain language, Liz knows that better than I do. Uh, they now have the tablet. That's what uh Mrs. Rivers has signed and we're asking for the uh select board to countersign.
Okay, and what we authorized was the town staff to begin negotiating the H C A, which is now here in front of us, and we're here to see if we want to approve it tonight.
That's right.
Very good. Um. Uh, Miss Rivers, do you want to give us, uh, we heard from you several, I think it was months ago now, but you just want to give us an overview of your plans for the business? Um, and I think David's going to ask why you chose Maynard if he didn't a few months ago.
Few months ago, like, I think you have ties to Maynard.
I do, I do. So I'm I'm hoping to open dispensary at forty two Main Street. I'm really excited about it. Um, I'm also, um, we had discussed as part of the. H C A agreement with the planning board that there's going to be um a vibrant painting in the in the front of the store. That's going to serve as as adding a um a a cultural component as it's Native American artwork. Um, and it's also going to block the view into the store uh for from the public. To any of the products associated with the dispensary. Um, as far as why Maynard, I I actually uh live in Sudbury. So it's the next town over and we had previously, um, my children and I lived in. And we have previously, um my children and I lived in Maynard. And so um I'm very familiar with the town. I've lived very close by. My son's been in Boy Scouts in Maynard for uh quite a few years now. And so I I I really enjoy the town and the more time I spend there, the more I'm enjoying it.
Any questions on the HCA or for the applicant?
So Steve, if I understood your point, uh these HCAs now are just standard boilerplate boilerplate. Commentary from the state.
Yeah, can you describe what uh the significance, I can read them, but what is what is the significance? What is this? What is the significant difference between our prior HCAs and this new version?
Okay, uh Liz probably has a more nuanced opinion, but else I will say that it probably has to do with the impact fees. Which they've made a lot more stringent now. Uh the town seeks to collect um. Fees from any negative externalities from running a marijuana business. I guess it is viewed as being the targeting of these businesses. As compared to, you know, say a bar or any other uh establishment. So the impact fees, as you know, previously were negotiated uh. With the individual retailer. Now it's more. If the town seeks to collect the impact fee, we have to demonstrate. Fairly conclusively that the specific retailer has caused the damage for which we're looking to recuperate the costs. Um so it's an evidentiary standard, I guess, uh whereas before it was more like. Okay, can we operate here? We'll give you some money in doing so. We'll call that the mitigation of uh impact. Thank you. Any question, any other questions from the board? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the host community agreement with Rivers Natural Healing Inc. For a proposed registered marijuana dispensary to be located at forty two Main Street, Maynard, authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, Miss Rivers. Good luck on the next steps in the process.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
Have a good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we will move on to item sixteen, which is the senior center planning. Uh Chris, do you have any updates for us?
Oh, I have lots of updates.
Yeah.
They are working on a um. They they kind of previewed it just to that board itself, um at our last meeting, which was last Thursday. And it's kind of a a comprehensive document that is going to um. Be, you know, used to inform this board of. You know, where they're at, what they're thinking, long lo- lo- long range, short range, what are some of the asks they're anticipating? And they're gonna want to share that with us at a at a, you know, a fairly. Fairly recent, you know, upcoming meeting fairly soon. They're not, you know, we're not stretched out too long. But they have a um, you know, a very comprehensive document that they um. Went item by item through several pages long and then there were some edits and some changes. So they hope to get that finalized and then um use that to inform us. Um and answer any questions that we have through that document. And I'm sure that document will um. You know, uh ask some more questions by itself, just on, you know, some of the information in it. So then um they also intend to use that document or the subsequent document based on our conversations with them. To inform the public as we move forward in the process. And other than that, it was, you know, just business, looking at places, trying to um, they. I don't know, Greg, did they ever hear back from um, do you know if they ever heard back from Mill and Main on building nine?
No, I and I didn't get any um updated responses to the request for, so what we got is what we got.
Yeah, so we so we had, we had extended the town being we extended the date to the sixteenth of August for that RFI. Um as of Thursday night, which was the fifteenth, they hadn't they hadn't heard or seen a response. They didn't know if it was gonna go straight to Greg, but they were some conversations that took place that they were not going to offer them. Uh pricing or the opportunity to get into building nine. So um after the sixteenth. Uh Jerry and a couple of the other folks that have been in in closer contact than most of us. With the people at Mill and Main, we're gonna get into a conversation with those that they thought they needed to to discuss. The possibility of, you know, putting something together for building nine, cause that's the most um. User-ready building, I guess you would say.
Right, that's okay. Hey, we did get the result for building. I want to say eight, but it was not, is what you're saying, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So that's where they're at. They're gonna, they're gonna come to us in the next few meetings or so with a um a document that they've been working on to um. You know, inform us based on some of the questions that Jeff and some others had at um. Quad board meeting and and at other times, you know, as we've been going down the road and having discussions with those guys. So they'll. They're gonna come to us with that as as soon as they can finish it.
Okay, very good. Sorry, any questions uh for Chris to bring back to that group? Okay, Chris, they don't go into use of the current space, do they?
Yeah, they they do.
Okay.
They they have included um in in the piece of paper in the document that I saw, there was a lot of stuff about the um current building. Um from my perspective, some of the things on there and in there were um. Wrong in that they were showing a picture of a hallway. In the building and saying, oh, we can't get, you know, we don't, this is a hallway. Look at it. Well, it's not a hallway that it's a, it's a, it's a hallway that's used for. You know, dead space storage because no one uses the doorway. It's, you know, the access to the men's room is through the clubhouse, not through the back stairwell. The back stairwell is is not used for anything but an emergency exit. And the hallways off of it are not used for classes or any other uh anything else, but they have pictures of that in there. You know, th- there's some things in there that need to be taken out and changed.
Okay, I think a realignment with that group would be healthy, so I'm looking forward to having them in an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, that's so, yeah, they were, well, they they have, they have the old building in in the potential new building conversations too. It's all in there. It's a very, it's a great, it's a great document. They just, they just, you know, some questions were raised and they just did, just tightened up.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions for Chris and the senior center focus group? Okay, uh we'll move on to the Green Meadow School Building Project. Uh do we have any update on that either from the? Select board from the TA representative?
Uh no, Chris.
I don't think that committee has met since we last met. I don't think, there'd be nothing to add over the um the last, the last comments about it. There's a lot, I know, you know, there's a lot of um. There's some, you know, a couple of um committee things going on behind the scenes and work, you know, working on um. Three or four of the members had a set of um questions and comments and concerns um in relation to some of the design. Aspects and they went back to the um Colliers with all that and the at the second to last meeting before we got here. Um Colliers went through them one at a time and kind of pointed out what they were doing and there were some changes made. There was some change that weren't made. And now that group has gone back and kind of um they're they're now in like, in their committee meetings. Just reassessing um some of those design points based on the conversations of that last meeting.
The next meeting is next week, so.
Yes.
Very good. Alright, any other comments or questions about the Green Meadow School Building Project? Alright, we'll move on to item eighteen, which is correspondences. We have four correspondences here. Any questions or comments on the correspondences?
Happy to see money coming in. It's it's sort of a theme for this evening. Representative Hogan on the earmac for a senior program. Uh but I will um move to uh accept the correspondence. Um as shown.
A through D.
A through D.
Second.
All in favor? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Uh we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes. We have one set of minutes.
Do we? I don't think we do.
Oh, we do not. We have no setting.
No, no, um um my man told Greg Wilson was stricken last. Why he's joining us from home.
Okay, Greg.
Justin too, something's going on y'all. So um so anyways, Greg, didn't get a chance to.
Uh no worries. So we'll move right on to the town administrator report in that case.
Hey, I was on vacation. I came back. Um Stephanie did a great job. Stephanie, the town administrator, Stephanie Duggan uh did a great job. Because little did she know that her own partner, Greg, um was also gonna uh be out at the end of the week last week. Greg also let us out, so. Um you did fantastic. Uh so I appreciate all the hard work on all the staff, particularly Stephanie in my absence. Yeah, okay. Is there anything you want to add from?
The chair and working with Seesaw, seeing through about all those things that you need to get through. So I learned a lot and I appreciate your coverage.
We had a good week.
You you, yeah, you did fine. No, um I appreciate that. Things are getting busy though. I can't believe we're we're all. More than halfway through August. And I thought summertime was just gonna be a slow time and it was not. So here we are, getting a meeting, it's fun season. Yeah, we're all on it.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Alright, uh in that case, we'll move on to the chair report. Um. The only thing I'll note is actually two things. So I did have the pleasure of attending the Eagle Scout ceremony. Two very interesting, I mean, one of whom is attending a school to become a high-performance race car driver, which I thought was very interesting. Another is gonna go study abroad in London immediately like his freshman year. So both of them are are more interesting already than I was at their age, so quite quite impressive. Um the other thing I just wanted to, I'll be going into the budget subcommittee meeting on Thursday. One question I had for this group is any thoughts or input into timing or content for our next quad board or or other steps? Uh that'll certainly be a topic of discussions. I mentioned at the last quad board and I wanted to check in, especially with uh. Chris and David, if you had any input into that conversation.
Uh my thought would be, I think the general consensus was that we should do it quarterly. Um and when was our last one in July?
Yeah.
So that would be sometime in early or mid-November. Um. Be would be.
Wouldn't quarterly, wouldn't quarterly bring it to uh October?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, October.
As a numbers guy, don't try and trick him.
And that's at uh two o'clock in the morning in my time.
Yeah.
Chris, any uh additional thoughts?
No, it's I I'm, you know, I I'm okay with that timing, October for another one or, you know, whenever. Um you know, whenever the the chairs of the four boards feel as though it's, it's the right time where there's something, you know, something to put on the table to discuss.
Seemingly have to be after special town meeting, uh which is October seventh, so sometime in that.
It's good to give everybody a week or two to breathe after a meeting as well. Um okay, alright, I'll, I've got the input. We'll take it to the board. Uh we'll take it to the budget subcommittee meeting. Um alright, very good. Uh and that's it for me on the chair report. So board member reports, David?
Uh I have nothing other than uh the uh. The Affordable Housing Trust met last night. Nice conversation, got our business done and uh heard some thoughts from members on. Other issues, she's always. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just, I don't know if every everybody had seen Greg's note about the um. The school, the Coolidge School, Sletting Hill. Yeah, the problem with the thought of um minimizing the area or whatever, but I mean, it, I would assume that. They're under um guidelines as to where that fence has to be and how how much room it has to take up. And if, and if, and if that's the case, I mean. I understand they don't want to lose the hill forever, but if that's the case, if they have to have that up and it's a safety and an environmental issue. Why are we gonna ask them to do something to to allow some sledding when it's a legitimate issue?
I I agree. And on that note, um I was just told this evening that um town engineer Wayne Miko went out to take a look to just see like. How the legitimacy of the spacing. And uh according to the report I just got, Wayne did find it was appropriate. So to your point, Chris, it's they do it with a certain. According to regulations or whatever, like the size of the environmental impact construction, et cetera. It is unfortunate, it according to the picture that I saw, I didn't have the chance to drive out there. It it does take up a lot of the hill. However. They have to, you know, construction season only lasts so long. So when the snow starts to come down, it might, the fence might go anyways.
So it might not, it might not matter, but if it's still there for the project deserves.
Right, or maybe they can.
They lose the season of the hill.
I think that's, yeah, no, the project is expected to finish up next spring, so it tends to stay as for one season only.
But I was appreciative of um I gave that a word.
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Great point. Mike?
Uh not much, other than just to highlight that the uh. Uh MVP, the um municipal vulnerabilities program. Uh I've been unable to attend myself the last week or two, but they've been working on their plans for. Uh public engagement and and what the group is trying to do. Uh and so just wanted to highlight that that's a group that's really trying to put a lot of effort in into engaging the public. Um with with their ideas and and how to move forward. So I just wanted to commend them for that.
I did, uh I actually was confronted, if you want to use that word, at the uh farmer's market. If a pamphlet with a little thing made it very easy, you just put your phone up to it and the quiz came up. And filled it, sent it back. It was very well done.
Yeah, no, they're doing, they're doing a nice job, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Alright, well, that concludes the meeting. I'll note that um our next. The first Tuesday in September is the state primary. So our next meeting will be on the Wednesday, September fourth. So I'll see you all Wednesday, September fourth. Um I'll make a motion to adjourn second. David?
Yes.
Chris?
I'm in favor.
Mike?
Definitely, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And Greg?